Coach my fourth and fifth grade girls, so.
Hey, we would not stand between you.
Thank you.
And your coaching responsibilities. We appreciate you letting us know early, though. I appreciate that. Okay, we are going to go through a quick roll call. Commissioner Dewar.
Here.
Commissioner Packard.
Here.
Commissioner Connor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Jennifer Davis. And again, I'm Chair Huxford. We will roll on with any guest business. We have any guest business that is online or in the audience. I see no one in the audience that wants to raise their hand.
We don't have anyone online either.
Okay, then we will move on with our approval of the meeting minutes. This was our public hearing that thank you all for being flexible. This was a public hearing that we did via Zoom because of weather constraints. I think that it actually went as well as a Zoom meeting can go, so thank you so much for setting that up. We will, I will ask if any of the commissioners have any questions, edits, or changes on the meeting minutes as written. Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve by name?
Commissioner Packard motions to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Connor Davis, seconds.
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any, have any concerns? We shouldn't because we've all had time to read over those. That's weird because you're talking in third person. It seems Commissioner Packard says, that's gonna be odd. That's gonna be odd. That's gonna take some getting used to.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll do it and I'll try, again, I'll try if it, if it doesn't go with the flow. If we have a public hearing and that's not something that we're doing, I'll try to make up for it, okay? Okay, so we are going to move on to the action items of the meeting. We are on discussion items five. We have Kristi Schmidt, who's been joining us again from afar. Can I just say that I appreciate if you were under the weather not joining us? And so for our commissioner that stepped out this evening and for yourself, if there's any sort of bug going around, I would greatly appreciate if you would zoom in. I just hope that we all will get through this season safely. So I fully support Kristi. Take it away.
Well, thank you, Chair. And I did want to let you know, first of all, I'd like to do an audio check. Can you all hear me? Yes, okay, perfect. I do want to point out, I've been on early with Dawn. My laptop battery is giving me a low indicator. Worst case, I may have to plug off and replug in another laptop. So I'm going to fly through my presentation quickly and hopefully respond to any questions you have. And so thank you for indulging me being remote. Tonight, I'll be presenting the concurrency overview along with streets and parking code update. In your packet, you have four items, the staff report along with the work schedule and the summary of traffic mitigation impact fees along with the concurrency management system summary. I would like to point out that the two summaries are done by co-pilot. So if you have suggestions for me on level of detail, I would appreciate an email after the meeting and hear your input on that. So tonight, we'll just go over background and why is concurrency, what is concurrency? Why is it important? The regulatory framework and the summary of codes to be updated along with public outreach process and to get the planning commission's input on the public outreach process. So Planner Levitan took you through the bulk of last year with the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. It is soon to be re-adopted here by the council at the end of the month with some minor tweaks from Congress. With that, in the city's new comprehensive plan, as you recall, we adopted new levels of service and also a new multimodal level of service for four different modes of travel along with government services, police services, and roads and parks. And those are the services that the city of Lake Stevens provide. The city itself is unique. It's a little different from some other cities. We don't provide all the utilities and different other features to all our community. We actually use outside partner agencies such as, we have two school districts. We have the Lake Stevens sewer district. We have Snohomish County PUD for both water and electrical, along with Snohomish County Regional Fire, and they provide our emergency services. The city actually adopts our comprehensive plans and their capital plans and their level of service, and those are embedded by reference within the city's comp plan. During the land use review process, the city coordinates closely with the special purpose districts. So the next step now that the comp plan is adopted is to implement the comp plan and actually update the code to reflect the new comp plan, level of service, and policies. And that is one of the first work projects for the planning commission this year. So let's talk about what is concurrency? Why is concurrency important? And I bring this up because unless you've done a building permit or a development application, you may not know what it is. But Dave has done a good job educating you, so I'm sure you have a good idea of what it is. It's the 12th goal of GMA. It ensures that public facilities and services necessary to support the development, let's use the subdivision as an example, shall be adequate or that financial commitment is in place to complete the improvements or strategies within six years. That's why in the comp plan, we have the 20-year improvement plan to match the planning horizon along with the funding plan, which is the six-year CIP. And that funding plan is what is fed by impact fees, as an example, from developers to help construct those projects to offset their development impacts. Concurrentcy is a term, and it's actually defined by the state. And it's used to describe a regulatory mechanism for determining if a development proposal meets the provisions of the City of Lake Stevens Comprehensive Plan and to ensure that improvements or strategies are in place of the time of development and that the financial commitment is there. And it is really the commitment per the statute. It's actually with six years. So that's why it's really important that we keep our six-year CIP up to date. And that's also embedded in our concurrency management system within our code. It complies with the state regulations. So that brings us to what you get to do, which is to update the code. If you look at the staff report in the eight different chapters that we're going to be going through, you can see when they were last updated, when they were first codified and last updated. Some go back all the way to 1995. So we definitely have some work cut out for us to integrate and to add in regulatory compliance and best practices to these chapters. We have contracted with Transpo, we did that last year, in order to assist with the technical aspects of the regulatory update such as the traffic impact fees, the methodology, some recommendations on concurrency options and/or perhaps suggested parking regulations. We're also going to be looking at administrative process and procedures for each chapter to minimize any conflicts between them and to ensure the street standards align with the EDs and industry standards. Remove regulatory compliance from the EDs and shift them over to the municipal code. Currently, we have some conflicts between the EDs and the code, and so we want to make sure that the regulatory requirements are in the code and the EDs are truly EDs. They are truly designed standards. We want to verify parking regulations. I would like to point out that in my staff report, I did state this, this was one to get, going to be one of the next items coming back to you. However, during Russ's legislative review this session, there is a parking proposal to regulate parking for jurisdictions statewide. So in order to not waste city funds or staff time, we are going to sit and wait to see what the legislation, legislature does on that particular bill. Also, we'd like to emphasize low-impact development and sustainable development where possible to improve safety, multimodal transportation, smaller roadways, and road diets. We're looking at developing in some flexibility into our design standards and also to provide more specific private road standards. Right now, we have, we have very little to go on for private road standards. And believe it or not, we do a lot of development with private road standards. So for staff, we would like to have some good clear direction, and so would our developers. They would like to have a predictable development regulations. So we have started researching that. As I noted before, we're looking at our concurrency standards to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and to look at best practices for multimodal. And then we will be updating our traffic impact fee methodology and integrating in the latest ITE, which is the International or the Institute of Traffic Engineers Generation Data. We retain those manuals in office. So here you go. Here's the list of the codes that'll be coming forward to you later this year. In fact, at the next meeting, you'll be looking at the concurrency management system along with the traffic impact fees. So starting here, we have subarea plans, streets, sidewalks. We do have parking, concurrency, and traffic along with the EDs. I would like to point out, we have been coordinating with the Public Works Department. They're taking the lead on doing the update to the EDs. They have hired a separate consultant. So we have an agreement with them and a schedule, a separate schedule and charter with them to coordinate between our road standards and the ED standards. Then we're going to be looking at updating the traffic developer impact fee worksheet. I did a minor update last year on it just to correct a formula. And so now we're going to actually be updating it to match the methodology that we need to match the comp plan. Then as far as park impact fees goes, is Dave will be talking about the docket coming forward for 2025. Updating the park element is in there. So this chapter will come later in the year, once that element is done. This is where I'm seeking some input from you as, as a person, as a member of the community and the planning commission. You do a lot of projects. You participate in a lot of surveys. What's effective? What have you found to be effective as far as outreach? With this process, with these eight different chapters and codes being updated, we want to put together a stakeholders team and we want to make sure we get meaningful input back. So I'd like to hear from you. And if you don't have an idea tonight, think about it or even ask round and get people's opinions. And then feel free to email it in. I'd really like to get an idea of what the community feels is effective for them and how they feel most comfortable communicating. Here's just some typical ideas that we normally do. You'll see they're very familiar, such as a survey, perhaps two to break it up between parking and road design along with coordinating a subcommittee of interested parties. And you'll see in the staff report, I included the typical groups such as Chamber, the Bicycle Club, Master Builders, Conservation District, Public Works, Police Department, Fire Department, School District, et cetera. So if you have any other members or any groups you feel help represent the community and they're a user of our roads and parking, please put them in and let me know, because I'd like to have an all-encompassing holistic list. And then obviously, we have a planning commission open house, and then I would like to get ideas. That's why I put the question mark there for you. So does anyone have any immediate thoughts or suggestions as far as public input goes right now at this time? Yes, Commissioner Davis?
Um, I do have a thought, and it's probably cost prohibitive, but.
Oh, okay.
We tend to get huge turnout when stakeholders are directly contacted in the mail.
Oh, yeah.
With little cards that come and, and often we'll hear, this is the first time I've heard of this, and I'm very concerned, and I've been chatting with my friends online, and I have these ideas that may or may not be accurate. And we're here because we're worried, afraid, angry, you know, all sorts of things. And so I don't, but that's extremely expensive way to reach out. But I just wanted to throw it out there to the other commissioners that if that's been your experience too, it seems like we do get massive turnout when people are caught. And it doesn't seem like on, there's one central hub to communicate with people online. I don't know. I just wanted to put that out there.
Commissioner Dewar, I would agree with that statement. I think one of the places that if we're not advertising these opportunities, that would be a good spot would be inside of some of the Lake Stevens Facebook groups. It seems that, at least from what I've seen, once a rumor gets out there into that group, then it takes on a life of its own, and then we have a lot of misunderstandings and concerns that come before the commission. And so if we can get out ahead of it and say, hey, there's an opportunity for you to participate, you know, see the website for more details, maybe that we can engage them sooner and then help with, help with their understanding along the way.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I would agree, a direct mailer is highly effective. We do that with land use development proposals.
Commissioner Dewar, do you think that message would be better coming from like a planning commissioner as a liaison or having the city post directly to a Facebook group?
I, I feel like, you know, assuming we're not in violation of any PDR or open public meeting stuff, that it would probably be most effective if it came from a city account with a city logo. You know, we recognize each other in here, but I think out in, you know, the cyberspace, nobody's really going to know who, who I am by, by my picture or by my name. But they will recognize the city logo. And if it says, you know, City of Lake Stevens on it, it should be pretty clear that it's an official outreach. That's not to stop people from taking on this on their own.
I'll look into that and inquire about the legalities of that of city staff posting on the Facebook.
And then, yeah, this is a subset, but of the community, but a large subset. I mean, the school community, we get emails as parents of all these, you know, this event is happening on this night, movie night from Glenwood Elementary on this night, right? What does it cost to go through Peach, Peach Tree?
Peach jar.
Whatever that is, right? What's the cost associated with that? And again, it's not the full population, but it's a large population, especially if you're wanting to talk about roads and parking design around schools, right? Inlets, outlets, and how that affects communities and things like that. Obviously, those communities would be invested there.
Thank you.
And this is Commissioner Connor Davis. I just, the first three cities that came to mind were Edmonds, Marysville, and Snohomish. I just did a quick search, and each one of those cities has their own quarterly print newsletter that goes out.
Okay.
The, you know, it's, there's Our Edmonds, there is the My Marysville, and in Snohomish, it is the Snohomish Quarterly. That's how I know for, for our family will get, you know, from the school district. I work in the school district, and I find out about what the school district is even doing by looking at the newsletters that are, that are sent home in the, the calendar. I live right around the corner here from downtown, and I'll see things going on downtown, like, well, I didn't even know some, an event was going on that weekend. So just in general, I think the city could really do a good service in communicating what we're discussing tonight, but also just general public events through a quarterly print newsletter.
Interesting. Excellent ideas. If you think of more as you go out about your week and the weekend, please feel free to just send us an email and let us know.
Kristi, if I may, just.
Yes.
Add us. One more thought, and it piggybacks off a couple of things, but for the people that have been recently annexed to sit on the planning commission, some of us have business interests that were annexed, but those people were promised a lot of things when it came to traffic and transportation and parking. And I think that maybe if it were something that's a little bit more targeted towards parts of the city, maybe to Commissioner Jennifer Davis's comments, to keep the costs down, parts of the city that are under development or that are seeing a lot of development, like down on Machias, to target those neighborhoods, those existing neighborhoods, to say, we would like your feedback because we know that you're relatively new to the city and we know that you're seeing growth around you, you know, daily. Maybe scope it down a little bit, but be a little bit more specific.
We even talked to staff as perhaps using our land use notice sign and putting them up in public areas with a QR code that refers you to a survey, something along that lines, like you'd often see in a park, like, please take this survey. What type of amenities would you like to see in this park? But it would be tapered towards streets, parking.
In a, in a way that you don't have to pull off into, I sooner or later have to pull off of Highway nine to see what's going on next to, you know, but I don't want to do that in traffic. You know what I mean?
Correct.
So in a, in a, an accessible way, you know, yes, this is going on in this area, but how can it, feedback from the people in that area, I guess? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Yes. Needs to be an area that's accessible by foot. You don't need to pull over with your car.
We've got a beautiful walking trail right there that a lot of.
We sure do.
And, you know, there are areas around the city that that could happen, but I just know being of those discussions, there was a lot said that was going to happen in that area that hasn't yet, and it's getting worse. So that would be a, a big topic, I think, in, in areas where a lot of construction is being concentrated right now.
Thank you for your comments.
Kristi, this is Commissioner Packard. Can I ask a couple clarifying questions outside of the public outreach process? So just trying to understand two specific things. One around the scope of this. I mean, the trestle, right, is outside of the scope of this.
Correct.
Highway nine is, I guess I'm thinking then, it, within the space of what we control, let's say you're going to build something in the northeast corner of the city, but all of the major thoroughfares to get out of the northeast side to the rest of the city, right? Those, that infrastructure gets affected, but it isn't directly affected because it's still miles from that development. So when we talk about strategy, what's the, the doc, the GMA says you need to either have transportation improvements or strategies to accommodate those development impacts. Yeah, what's the scope? How far does that reach? As we look at specific subdivisions or larger activity?
No, that is a very excellent question. So as far as concurrency goes, it's proportionate with the impacts of the development. So typically, you'd be looking at, and I'm just giving an example here. With a subdivision, you would be looking at if they front an arterial or let's say Machias, they would be looking at doing improvements on Machias. If their traffic impact analysis identifies that they're impacting South Lake Stevens Road and Davies, that intersection, and it's going to bring it below its level of service, which is a real life example currently, that the developer would have to pay their particular development's proportionate share, the trips generated from the new development on that intersection. And so they're required to do that. They are not required to correct existing deficiencies. They're only required to mitigate their proportionate share of what their development is creating. So that is a very important question, and it comes up most often at a public hearing or prior to a public hearing when people receive a public notice about a development and all of a sudden they're aware that, oh, gosh, you know, this is a great venue. I have concerns right now. We have people speeding along this road as an example. They've like traffic control or a road diet, so people slow down. And those are things that we look to get on the CIP because those are existing problems. They're not something the developer will contribute to. They will contribute to impacts to other parts of it, but not that particular existing problem per se. I hope that makes sense. Does that help answer your question? So they're not contributing to the trestle or Highway nine per se.
Yeah, a, a little bit. I guess the concern, what I thought you heard, I heard you say is when a specific development pushes the infrastructure below a level of service, right? So maybe the development before it didn't actually push it below, but it obviously contributed to it, right?
Correct. Yes.
Is, is there a strategy where, okay, yeah, this existing development doesn't actually push us below the limit, but we know that there's going to be three more of you coming behind you in the next two years. So you need to pay your portion of that so that it's not just the last developer who, who takes the brunt of that, right?
Correct. And with this new update, I will tell you that currently we track traffic trips within the subareas. We have the planned actions, and so they're approved for a set level of trips and generation. What we haven't been doing an excellent job of is tracking them throughout the entire city. We do do regular traffic counts, but with this new update, we do plan to incorporate in a regular tracking matrix for all developments citywide as part of our concurrency process for the city. So we will be getting better data to address situations just like that, Commissioner.
Okay. And then one follow-up, the, there's another comment that a financial commitment is in place to complete the improvements or strategies within six years. How are we held accountable for that? Meaning, when you, when you intend to make an improvement or build a community, yeah, you could have a strategy in place and you can say that you're going to do it, but what prevents the city from changing course three, four years down the road and saying, well, we really don't want to spend that money here. We want to spend it there as the priorities of the city adjust, right? How, how is the city held accountable to some of those strategies or commitments?
That's an excellent question because that does deal with the priority list on the six-year capital improvement plan. And you have seen a shift in priorities from council. And they do have that legislative authority to make that decision if something comes up that becomes a higher priority or it's a safety issue. They do have the opportunity to make adjustments to those. Typically, they're fairly set because they're funded or at least almost 100% funded on the six-year list. But you have seen times when they do get shifted. It, it's not a perfect world, I will say that. And I don't know, Dave, if you have any further comments on that.
I know. I mean, that's a, a major reason why we do the annual docket and why we do adjust is you're having to continually adjust and account for and evaluate concurrency when you're adjusting your six-year project list to stay concurrent and to stay consistent with the Growth Management Act. I mean, that's a major component of what's really required of capital facilities elements. So we do that. The Public Works Department typically does their own process as well. And so I would have to look into on the kind of the public work side of things, what, I guess, punishment, you know, for lack of a better term, there is if you don't basically provide a comprehensive transportation system that essentially provides concurrency with the planned development within that area and the funded infrastructure improvements. But yeah, we can definitely look into that a little bit more, but generally, it's just that GMA compliance, sharing it with commerce, making sure that as it relates to the comprehensive plan as a whole and the, the city's development assumptions, that you're focusing your transportation improvement. that you're focusing your transportation improvement dollars in the, in the correct places.
Yeah, I'll be clear. I'm not asking you to go do more work on behalf of if there's value for you and looking into that, great. I'm not asking for you to be accountable of how you're being held accountable. So don't, uh, don't do any more work on my account.
Thank you. Those are great questions and people do ask things like that. This is one reason why we hired Transpo and their recommendation was actually to create a citywide concurrency matrix. And so staff is supportive of that and both public works because we really do feel that'll help us keep a better track of these projects. We are accountable to spend the monies within the six year period that we collect. We are held liable for that or else it's required to be refunded by state law. So. Well, you have had good questions.
Any other comments? Christie, do you have anything else of us?
Let me slide forward on my next screen here and see. So here's what's coming up next. As I mentioned, you'll be getting a detailed account of the concurrency chapter with edits. It'll be a strikeout red line version that you're familiar with and same with our traffic mitigation impact fee. The goal is to have this done and we're hoping to front load it so that way you don't have the summer months are super busy. We hope to front load it here early this spring. The idea is to have it done within six to eight months, as you see on the schedule there. And with that, that concludes my presentation for this evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
And Christie, if I could just, it'll provide a little bit of a transition into mine once I get into the code work. But I, I think if we do look at potential opportunities to do kind of citywide engagement and direct mailings, I think it wouldn't be focused on just this. We could potentially create like a essentially a master code update page for the city because we're going to be doing transportation and concurrency, housing in critical areas all in 2025. And I can't think probably of three topics that would potentially be of more interest. I mean, I could imagine we'd get pretty engaged stakeholders for all of those three topics. So if we could do some sort of citywide mailing or at least a, a larger scale mailing that kind of then takes you to a website where you can learn about all of these individual things instead of trying to squeeze a bunch of stuff into the actual mailer, that might be a way to go.
Makes sense. Okay. With that, let's move on. We have two discussion items that are coming up. Are both being handled by you. Senior Planner Levitan, take it away.
So I am, which one is it first? The docket? All right.
I would like to announce really quickly, if Planning Commission doesn't know, Dave has been promoted to Principal Planner. So if you haven't congratulated him yet, please feel free to after the meeting.
Thanks, Christie. All right. So we are just going to talk a little bit about the 2025 Comprehensive Plan docket. For those of you that joined, I think a couple of you joined in the summer of 2023, so you probably caught it right towards the end, towards the adoption of the 2023 docket. We did not have an annual docket in 2024 because we had the periodic update. But just a little bit of information is basically the growth, the Growth Management Act allows you to update your comprehensive, cities to update their comprehensive plans no more than once per year with a few exceptions, like adoption of some area plans and some other minor items. So we go through what's called a docketting process late in the year prior into, into January of that calendar year, where we provide the public with an opportunity to provide citizen initiated amendments to the comprehensive plan, to the future land use map, to any potential concurrent rezones. It can also involve, you know, if, if there's a direct impact on, on ordinances that are directly associated with the comp plan, those can all be proposed as part of the docket. So we issue notice in the, we issued notice at the end of 2024. The comprehensive plan provides community members through January 31st of each calendar year to submit those citizen initiated amendments. We had some initial interest, but we did not receive any citizen initiated amendments this year. So we are looking at just city initiated amendments, which may be proposed by staff, by city council, by the planning commission. So there still is an opportunity to revise the docket, to expand the docket if there are specific items that you would like us to consider, to analyze in advance of your public hearing where you then make a recommendation to the city council on ratification on that docket. So we typically have a kind of minor text amendments to the plan that happen every year. And then we also sometimes have map amendments. So we obviously just went, sorry, the only thing I have left is this stupid cough. I, it's bacterial, so I'm not spreading it, but but, uh, so we typically have text amendments and we sometimes have some map amendments as well. So we had a couple of items that we did not catch during the 2024 periodic updates. When we went back through and looked at the finished land use and zoning maps, we were like, oh, that probably should have gotten changed in 2024. So we just have a couple of very minor map amendments that we're proposing to two publicly owned parcels. So the first one is there off of Mitchell slash 116th on the north side of the lake. It currently has a land use and zoning designation of waterfront residential, but it is owned by the city and it contains a sewer district lift station. So we're proposing to change that from waterfront residential to public semi-public. Similarly there, the fire station 81 just north of here is made up of four parcels. Two of the parcels have the correct land use designation of public semi-public that's consistent with their current zoning of public semi-public. But I think this is a remnant from several years ago. Somehow the southern two parcels, so basically the parking lot and a little bit of additional area still has a downtown local commerce, land use designation. So we basically a, a main component or a major component of the Growth Management Act is provide consistency between your land use designations and your zoning designations, and that doesn't currently exist right now. So we want to make sure that we clean that up. So those are the only map amendments we're proposing. We obviously went through a pretty comprehensive process as part of the periodic update in 2024 to have more targeted map amendments specifically to address our capacity for high density residential housing and for employment. So we're not proposing any kind of more substantive amendments besides that. So with that, we also have just a couple of text amendments that we typically do per year. And then also, one of the major items for this year is updating our sub area plan. So we have the three sub area plans, downtown Lake Stevens, Lake Stevens Center and 20th Street Southeast Corridor. We did not make those updates concurrently with the periodic update that was adopted back in October. So we're looking at doing that as part of this year's annual docket. So that's make going through the plan, updating the land use designations and the maps that are shown within those plans. And then really looking through our land use element, our economic development element, our transportation element to make sure that the goals and policies and general narrative within the sub area plans are consistent with the comprehensive plan that was just updated and adopted. So that's probably be the most substantive amendment included as part of the docket. We typically every year update that capital facilities element. As noted in response to Commissioner Packard, making sure that that six year plan and that 20 year plan stays up to date, reflects city budget priorities, city transportation priorities, other capital improvement priorities. So we do that on an annual basis and that's primarily to tables 9.1 and 9.2, which are the six and 20 year capital facility plans. And then another of the major components, if you'll remember, we didn't have a whole lot of major updates, the parks element, and we had explained that that was because there's something called a Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. The parks element is not a fully mandatory, fully funded element under the Growth Management Act. But we do still have that as a permanent element and associated with that is what's called a Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, which is required of cities that want to seek funding from the state for parks improvements, for potential natural resource grants, for parks improvement grants, basically to stay in compliance and to be eligible. You need to demonstrate that you are updating your plan. It's on a six year update cycle. And so that is due by December of 2025. We anticipate largely kind of taking the additional graphics, the additional analysis, the updated narrative. And then basically probably creating a slightly abbreviated version of the pros plan and adopting that as the parks element. So that is the strategy, strategy at this point. So we'll be doing that concurrently and working collaboratively with the Parks and Recreation Department, who will be taking that lead on updating the pros plan. And then we'll bring basically update the parks element and that'll work its way through its typical channels through the planning commission and the city council as part of the annual docket. So with that, for those of you that have seen it in the past, we're required to prepare an analysis of how map and text amendments meet the ratification. So basically the city council is required to ratify the docket and they do that following public hearings before the planning commission. So that is scheduled for March 5th, where you will evaluate the ratification criteria and make a recommendation to city council on what should be included in the docket. And if you agree with staff on the proposed amendments, we're not making any amendments at this point. It's basically just ratifying the docket. So we can do the additional analysis throughout the year and bring it back towards the end of the year for you to hold a separate public hearing, accept additional public comments before we actually adopt changes to the plan via ordinance. So that ratification public hearing for you, as far as making your recommendation is March 5th. The city council public hearing is March 11th. And yeah, so just that was the kind of the crux of the presentation. Happy to answer any questions. If you have additional items that you had noticed, you know, through the 2024 periodic update that you think should be reflected in this year's annual docket, happy to discuss that and incorporate that into the analysis before bringing that back to you on March 5th. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Packard. Any questions of you?
No.
We're going to lose you momentarily. So I wanted to give the opportunity. Are there any other questions from any other, of the commissioners at this point? Yes, please.
Commissioner Jennifer Davis, I, I just wanted to reiterate for anybody who might watch this later because it always, always comes up when we, when it comes to the docket. I just wanted to reiterate that the March 5th public hearing that we hold is really setting our to do list with regard to this for the year, but the substantive analysis will take place over the course of the year and there'll be plenty of public opportunity for public comment at that point as well.
Correct.
So I just wanted to make sure we're all super clear.
Good clarification. Thank you. Hearing none, we could think we can move on to the critical areas.
All right.
Actually, as that is coming up, we are at 6:45 and I have not heard from Commissioner Morton, nor has Don Erickson. Do I have a motion to have an unexcused absence for Commissioner Morton?
Do or show moves?
Do or moves and?
Connor Davis seconds.
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed and any abstain? And again, it sounds harsh, but it keeps things even. So thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. So still David Levitan. So I'm just going to give a, a really brief intro, introduction to critical areas ordinance and the update that we are required to do in 2025. Looks like that should be a February 19th, unless we magically went back nine days. But just to provide a little bit of a, a general overview of critical areas in the state of Washington. The RCW basically defines five different types of critical areas. Those include wetlands, areas with a critical recharging effect. So critical, what are called either critical aquifer recharge areas. Basically those are areas where waterfalls from the sky, it infiltrates down into our aquifers and then has the potential and there are typically concerns about the potential for contamination as water infiltrates in, into the groundwater supply and how cities need to regulate those types of uses. So that's what critical aquifers are, frequently flooded areas, which are pretty explanatory here in Lake Stevens are flood plains. Geologically hazardous areas, so steep slopes and associated areas. And then fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. So that would be riparian areas, areas along streams, rivers, things along those lines. So for those that haven't really gotten into it, the city primarily regulates critical areas through our critical areas ordinance, which is in chapter 1488 of the municipal code. The exception of that is areas that are within the jurisdiction of the Shoreline Management Act. So basically within 200 feet of the ordinary high watermark of Lake Stevens or Pilchuck or Catherine Creek are actually regulated, their critical areas are actually regulated by the shoreline master program that the city has adopted. So it's appendix B of the SMP. And so that's the, the one area where chapter 1488, it's, it's incorporated into the SMP, but it's technically separate from chapter 1488. The last major update to the critical areas ordinance was back in 2019. So a few of you would have worked on that. We cover the different critical areas in parts four through eight. Kind of a lot of the emphasis of the staff report for this meeting was on what's called best available science, and that's really the major component of what we need to do when updating our critical areas ordinance through a periodic update. A periodic update similar to what's done for a comp plan. Basically there's a, a mandate from the state that you need to update your critical areas ordinance by a certain date. It technically was December 31st of 2024, but the guidance from Commerce was to allow cities an additional year to do that work so they could do additional analysis and do more technical analysis while incorporating the goal and policy direction from the comprehensive plan. So we do have through December 31st to say, to stay compliant with the Growth Management Act. So what needs to be done as part of this update is a general review, a general review of best available science, such as buffers for wetlands, streams, steep slopes. One of the major components that we need to do is that we do not currently have a section on critical aquifer recharge areas. So if you look at that kind of those dots northeast of the city boundaries and then look at that blue circle, that blue circle is basically what's called a wellhead protection area. So when you have aquifers or wells and then you have land uses within those areas and there's potential for contaminants to travel throughout a defined area is you need to do an analysis of how you should be regulating land uses, how you should be regulating development standards to account for a potential contamination that goes along with water that infiltrates into these wellhead protection areas or into these critical aquifers that are obviously below the ground. So that's going to be a major component of the best available science analysis that we do as part of this CAO update. So we're currently finalizing a RFP or request for proposals for consultant assistance to help us with that. There is a lot of good kind of guidance. The county has a relatively new and comprehensive ordinance related to critical aquifer recharge areas. A couple of other cities have done it recently. So we don't need to reinvent the wheel, but we need, do need to do that technical analysis and account for local conditions and how it should be reflected in our different land use regulations. And then the last thing is there's been some guidance on riparian areas. So basically the areas adjacent to streams and rivers, kind of where land meets water, where we need to do some additional analysis of riparian function. That's based on guidance from the Washington Department of Efficient Wildlife or WDFW. So our next steps are to issue the RFP, hire a consultant. Similar to what Christie was talking about, we want to make sure that we develop a public participation, participation plan that you know, gets us input from as many different stakeholders as possible. That was really good feedback. I don't think we need to maybe, you know, completely rehash what was discussed before, but we do plan on incorporating. before. But we do plan on incorporating, you know, a lot of the stuff that we heard from Planning Commission coming out of the comprehensive plan updates as far as ways to improve outreach and communication with the community. So we would welcome additional input on that. But I think the discussion earlier related to transportation and concurrency was a really good start. As I mentioned, I think there's opportunities to really share the full scope of code amendments that were actually either required to do or choosing to do in 2025 as part of our long-range planning work program. That includes this Critical Areas Ordinance update, the transportation and concurrency. We have housing and implementation work that we need to do by the end of the year to stay, to stay compliant. And that relates to what's called step housing. So basically, transitional emergency and permanent supportive housing. So we're going to be doing that work. So there's a lot of opportunities for us to really engage the community, and we want to continue to get that input from the Planning Commission on what you think the best methods and strategies for that are. And then obviously, you're going to be doing a lot of the work, and really as the advisory body to the City Council, we'll be having work sessions with you. We're going to make sure to check in with the City Council periodically as well. A lot of what we heard from your joint meeting last month was, you know, kind of identifying the scope of work very early on and getting that input from both the Planning Commission and the City Council, so we don't get so far down the road and, you know, find out, well, we don't really agree with this strategy, or we think that we'd like to expand the scope in this area or in this area. So as we really develop and, you know, are finalizing the scope of work related to this, we want to make sure that we check in back with you before we begin any of that substantive work. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions now that I've driven Commissioner Packard away. Tried to keep it basic on the, on the acronyms, but I know he had to leave. But yeah, general questions on the project, or thoughts on public engagement, what you'd like to make sure that you see in this process as far as engaging the community. Happy to discuss any of that.
Thank you, David. This is Janice. As you know, I was approached last week by several members of the community, one that has already made a connection with you, I believe, on what's going on in the city. But the question originally posed was that the county had rushed their critical area ordinance and then had it reversed by City Council, and now it's been taken back to committee.
By County Council, yes.
And so that doesn't, nothing that is happening with that reversal supersedes any of the work that we're going to be doing for City of Lake Stevens, correct?
No, that's for the, just the unincorporated areas of the county.
Okay. I was just making sure to answer correctly, but I did dutifully send this person to you as I do with everybody.
And there are certain jurisdictions, Snohomish County as well, that we're trying to do the work concurrently with their comp plan, trying to adhere to that 2024 update. We had received feedback from Commerce, from Ecology, from WDFW, that we were told, that they were totally fine if we, as long as we did the update by December 31 of 2025. So we didn't feel like rushing it in 2024. And I think that might be partially what happened, is that they tried to cram a lot of this implementation work at the same time they were developing policy language, and it sort of bit them a little bit. And so we'd rather take a little bit more time and really have a dedicated process just to the code work instead of trying to dovetail it with the comprehensive plan work.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments?
I just did one. It's Commissioner Doer. When you had the map up there earlier, and there was that big circle that was primarily looked like almost entirely in county, county area, I'm running on the assumption that anything that's going on in there is outside of the jurisdiction of this, of this project. But it is, you know, we are literally downstream from that. Is there an opportunity to interface with, I would assume, the county on, on this project so that we can make sure that, you know, the impacts of one are appropriately dealt with when we are faced with challenges and options for what our update looks like?
Yeah, we're going to want to make sure to look, I mean, when you look at this and you look at the wells that are kind of out here, and these, the blue circle is the wellhead protection area. And that's basically why we need to adopt CARA regulations is because that wellhead protection area. And we're going to verify this, and we need to do a city-specific analysis of best available science to make sure that our analysis matches. This graphic comes from the county. So it could be that it's slightly different than this, and that's why we need to do the best available science our own. But it's really this northeast portion of the city where the wellhead protection area extends into the city. That's why we need to develop our own regulations. We need to decide how we're going to regulate land uses there. You know, in my brief odyssey to the city that shall not be named, we were working on critical aquifer recharge area regulations, and it definitely stirred up some controversy there. And it was happening concurrently with a lot of the housing work. And so there are people that were trying to kind of say, hey, we shouldn't allow any increased density because it increases the opportunities for pollutants to contaminate the aquifers and have that travel in and impact different parts of our groundwater supply. So there's a lot of things associated with this. It's not just the science. It's then how the science interfaces with land use regulations. You know, do we, in that, this area is kind of right up against our industrial area. So it's like, how are you kind of assessing and evaluating environmental protection against economic development? You know, if you got really strict with your land use regulations within an industrial area, that would not be very good for your economic development. And so we're needing to balance all of these things. And that's why it's good that we're also going to be doing some of this, you know, work on as part of the 2025 work program as far as the future of the industrial area. You know, making sure that it continues to create, you know, or expand on the number of well-paying jobs in this area, that it is an important economic hub for the city, while also evaluating potential environmental impacts related to our natural resources. So there's a lot of things going on in this part of the city. And so it's going to, you know, take some very comprehensive planning efforts in 2025 to address those.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to the commissioners' reports. Let's begin with you, Jennifer Davis.
I have nothing this evening.
And Connor Davis?
Nothing to report.
And Commissioner Doer?
Nothing this evening.
And I am also, without anything to report this week. I will turn it back over to you then. Are you filling in for Planning Director's report?
I'll let Kristi jump on in if she's still got some battery power.
Thank you there. Good evening again. The one thing I did want to report to you on because you were looking for additional information about what's going on in the department and things, we do have a development agreement, if you remember the project of Lakeview Flats, which is just south, literally where you're sitting. They will be going back to the City Council next week to discuss with them a potential new development agreement for a slightly smaller building, a two-story building with an elevator and a single user. So if that's something you're interested in, please feel free to welcome to attend the City Council meeting next week. Then in addition, our department, related to critical areas, as Dave was talking about, because we do have our update coming this year, we are also updating our preferred consultants list. And our preferred consultants list is targeted at actually critical areas. So it addresses those. And what happens is, we ask companies and firms who are qualified in either as a wetland biologist, a geotechnical specialist, a stream biologist, or cultural resources, to apply and submit an application to the City of Lake Stevens to be on our referral list. And this list is updated throughout the year and also annually. And what it does is it provides a reference list for residents in our community, perhaps a mom and pop, who have no idea on who to go to, to get an estimate or a bid. So at least they have this list that they could go to, make some phone calls, and select someone who they feel comfortable in, who knows who does quality work that complies with the city's critical area guidelines. So that is my update for tonight. And I know Dave has a couple items for long range.
No, I was just going to note, I've, we're still adjusting, we plan on including that, kind of the three-month look ahead, and I totally blanked out on last Friday, so it didn't make it into the packet. So we do have the March 5 meeting, we have the public hearing for ratification of the docket. And then I think, you know, we're kind of front-loading this year with kind of introductions to all the different code projects, so you know what's coming up, and we can get kind of initial comments, the comments on the public engagement tonight for the transportation and concurrency was a really good example of things that we can incorporate into our work and why we're front-loading the year with kind of several of these introductions. So I'm going to try to bring back an update on kind of the process code, Chapters 1416A and 1416B, which isn't maybe quite as sexy as some of the other codes, because everybody, you know, loves their codes. And then also on, just provide an overview of the housing implementation work that we're going to be doing as well. I think similar to kind of a very high-level overview of the Critical Areas Ordinance update, this is something that we need to do by the end of 2025. It was largely identified for second and third quarter, but I think it's important to get initial thoughts from the Planning Commission early in the year. So that's kind of what's called step housing, transitional emergency, permanent supportive housing. Really, where a lot of our document in need through the comprehensive plan and through our growth targets is, is that we don't have to guarantee that this gets built, but we need to have the policies and programs in place that would allow for their developments if someone chooses to do so. So that's kind of the major items for next meeting. And yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, with that, at 7:05, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Connor Davis?
Doer will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
Have a wonderful evening.